Call to order this regular meeting of the Oberlin School District Board of Education. Please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White. Ms. Gadsden.
Here.
Ms. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Stagel.
Here.
Ms. Semeca.
Here. I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any changes, additions, questions, or discussion about the agenda? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White.
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden.
Yes.
Ms. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Stagel.
Yes.
Ms. Semeca.
Yes. Are there any citizens' concerns on agenda items? Anybody sign up back there?
One person.
One person?
Did you want to speak on the agenda item ma'am? Yeah. Nope.
Oh, okay. Thank.
Nope, we're good.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you for being here.
Thanks for coming.
Yep, that's what I'm here. There's nothing? Okay. Uh, okay, so next we'll move on to news of note and presentations. Dr. Hall.
Okay, do we have a couple of presentations from our students, athletic director, and have an O-Pass presentation? But first, I'd like to thank several people for helping Memorial Day celebration that we had, our Memorial Day commemoration that we had on Monday. The Scouts did a phenomenal job helping out with this and also our Oberlin Band did as well. Interact Club did a great job as well. Memorial Day is also an event that we work with the city and the college on. Our guest speaker, Tyrone Wiggs, he was phenomenal, did a great job honoring our falling soldiers there during that time. He's a member of the, he works at Oberlin College and also a veteran. I'd also like to thank our Post 656 who were there as well, who also highlights that event. I'd also like to remind everyone that our graduation is this Saturday at Finney at eleven o'clock, Saturday 31st. So we'd like for everyone to attend there and please keep in mind, there's no air conditioning in Finney. So please dress appropriately for that event. Okay, first presentation we have is Mr. Jarvin and Stop the Hate. And I'd like to turn over to Mr. Jarvin. Mr. Jarvin, here's the controller if you like.
Well, good evening, Board members, Mr. Reinhardt and Dr. Hall. Thanks so much for having us and in particular having our students. So we have a couple of folks we wanted to recognize. So back in the fall, students in my 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade classes participated in the Stop the Hate contest, which is from the Malts Museum over in Beechwood. And they promote inclusion and diversity and anti-bias education. So just a couple of thoughts here. So again, their goal is to create the society where it's accepting inclusion of everyone. Respect for all humanity. And this year, they have a prompt every year, kind of inspired by a quote, and this was the quote this year. Despite all the troubles of our world, in my heart, I have never given up on love in which I was brought up. In life, just as on the artist palette, there is but one single color that gives meaning to life and art, the color of love. And so the focus was this idea of love and being an upstander. And there were two students, Nicholas Stollnacker and Roman Smith Hoyle, who placed in, Nicholas was second place and Roman Smith Hoyle was third place. And there are approximately three thousand essays and poems that are submitted each year. So to have both of them recognized is really, really fantastic and a testament to the great work that they've done. And so I'd like to have Nicholas come up and start us. So he'll be reading the poems that I put on your table there.
Hello, my poem is titled Imagine. Imagine a clawing monster grabbing any strand of nonconformity and unraveling a blanket of creativity into silent handcuffs of string. Imagine a flat plane ignorant to the third dimension, able to conceptualize but not experience, watching flight while grounded. Imagine a loyalty to initial conditions, perfect but null determinism ensured to remain constantly still. Or imagine a world just above the boundary of the constrained mind. A lone bird flapping its chaotic wings above the limits of hate. Falling and rising and constantly moving and a naive boy looking up blinded by the lights of change, confident fingertips steady against a shaking wind, asking, how does it fly? Thank you.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much Nicholas. Next, Roman Smith Hoyle will come up and read another poem.
My poem is titled Seeking Generational Freedom. I am curious, I am determined, I am free. That doesn't pair well with a cool-toned west coast mother whose ancestry has taught that you must fake normalcy. I am cautious, I am timid, I am free. That doesn't pair well with a warm, vibrant Hispanic father whose family is a collection of brave, hardworking jokesters. I am determined, I am cautious, I am free. That doesn't pair well with a confused young girl whose family is a collage of different values in life. I am loyal, I am strong, I am defiant, I am anxious, I am scared. I am fierce, I am loving, I am free. That doesn't pair well with a manipulative, abusive friend whose dagger-sharpened family has taught them to break me until I stay out of fear, not free. I am curious, I am determined, I am free. This pairs well with my devoted mother hiding colors under a blanket of gray, simply wanting her child to grow past generational issues and live their own life. I am cautious, I am timid, I am free. This pairs well with my loving father, who knows that vibrant colors get tiring after a while and simply wants his child to learn to set boundaries and know when to take breaks. I am determined, I am cautious, I am free. This pairs well with a brave kid who is a collage of art styles, who is a combination of many histories and generational stories. I am loyal, I am strong, I am defiant, I am anxious, I am scared. I am fierce, I am loving, I am free. This pairs well with me, a young gringa Latina, a vibrant yet calm and collected tapestry woven by a history of beautiful people seeking love, shelter, security, community, and freedom.
Thank you, Rome. Next up, I'd like to recognize Micah Stiegl. She participated in the Just Write Creative Writing Program Contest and competed in two different, competed in the regional contest as well as qualified and advanced to the state tournament. And in both of these, they have three rounds and they have to write a short story, create a story in each round. At the regional and at the state, she had a number one story. So in her group, she had a number one story and was selected twice. So just wanted, Mike, if you would stand up just to be recognized. Thank you so much for having us here today. Really appreciate it and your support, your support for our students. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, very powerful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next we'll have a presentation from our athletic program, Mr. Zilich. He's been doing a phenomenal job this year with our students.
Good evening.
Good evening.
When talking with Dr. Hall, as far as finding a good time to come talk to the board and to the community, no better time in my opinion than the end to kind of give some good numbers and truly a good sight of what we've been doing this season. Going from the start, in no particular order, but it was just kind of off the cuff as we were, myself and Ms. Pearson were talking. Again, a lot of good things in this 24-25 school year, but I did want to highlight a lot of the people that did the work for this. Between our game day workers, our grounds crew, the admin staff as far as doing coverages, things like that. There are a lot of people in my first year that helped me out to make it such a successful year, so I appreciate them. But going down the list, for the first time for the season, we had our huddle cameras installed for, in the gym. And then for our soccer teams, this allowed our students and coaches to access film and our community members to access livestream. So essentially if our grandparents and whatnot couldn't be at the game, they could still watch. Final forms, at the beginning of the year, we started to do a soft rollout and at, by the end of the spring, we did essentially the main space to do eligibility. And so parents are allowed to do their medical information, upload their physicals. And essentially as coaches, it's a quick, nice, easy tap to be able to get into that system to see the communication if need be. Hometown ticketing, online platform that gave our parents as well as our students the ability to get online tickets. But the second part of that is our season passes that we rolled out this year. We went to a change where it was an all-season pass, so for one cost, both parents and students in the fall were able to get into any single Oberlin event. And then for the winter season, we piloted, allowing our students seven through 12 also in for free. So they still needed to sign up, still get a nice little ticket, so that way we can monitor who's coming in and out of our games. But with, again, great success as far as getting our athletes into the building and trying to keep our students here in Oberlin. New championship banners were unveiled in the gym during the winter season. Most notably, I think, kind of consolidating our championships, our conference, district, and regionals to those banners, but then also highlighting some of the state championships that we have not been recognizing in boys track and some of those runner-ups. And so that was really cool to experience that. Updates of the high school girls locker room, similar to the boys' side where there's like a gym locker room of sorts and then like kind of a more football team, team room. We kind of made that same setup in the girls', putting up an additional wall to separate, again, that kind of gym locker room versus the team room. New P.A. system in the high school gym, this is going to be unveiled to the public coming in for the volleyball season. Unfortunately, did not come in for the basketball season, but we're going to have it ready to go for next year. So no more portable speakers. We were able to have two new teams to our team list this year. We added, we reintroduced a boys' golf team. Seemingly, this team has been around, but not for the last handful of years since we were able to reintroduce that team. And for the first time, we were able to have a girls' bowling team. In the past, girls were able to participate in the boys' team, but we didn't have the numbers to essentially get that full girls' team. And this year we did, so that was very exciting. Myself and Ms. Diane Pearson, my assistants, we were working through participation tracking. This also goes up to that final forms piece, keeping track of our letters, the sports that the athletes were involved in throughout the season. And then just this, not yesterday, but the past Monday, we hosted a Coach Beyond Professional Development. This group I learned about through my A.D. Conference in Columbus. Through Ohio State, essentially a group that focuses on the mental health side of coaching, both for the coaches as well as for the athletes. And so we were able to bring one of their people in, we did a nice little presentation, had some dinner with the coaches. So that capped off, I think, again, a very successful season. And then upcoming, things that are already in the works, with collaboration with the tech department, we're going to be rolling out a platform called Sports Key. Essentially, this will kind of consolidate and be a little bit more forward-facing for our community members to see when our gym times are available for rent and also our coaches to see like if it rains, right? Does anybody have the gyms available to them right then and there? So it's going to be a good software to bring in. Both a pro that I guess, I think I have on the next slide, but we were able to play our baseball and softball games on the backfields here for the one last season before this middle school gets started. And so we'll be back at Hamilton Fields for baseball and softball next season. And finally, working with Mr. Randy Smith and our athletic boosters, starting this Oberlin Athletic History Initiative. This got started with the championship banners, is going to the idea of record boards as well as a potential athletic hall of fame, kind of more details to come. But as far as community member and alum, Mr. Randy Smith has been a big part of that, kind of helping out the situation there. A couple of numbers for you. So when I came in during my time, kind of the big question was athlete participation and what that looks like within Oberlin as well as across the L.C. eight. For the high school, as you can see, 160 unique athletes, which is 56 and a half percent of our student body. Ninety-six of those are multi-sport athletes, meaning they compete at least in one more sport throughout their, the 24-25 season, which was 60% of the athletes. And 14 students were three-season athletes, which I want, in general, it's a very tough thing, even in my position to, and with a school district our size, to have kids participate in three sports, right? When we think about whether they're, they have a main sport and possibly playing a club sport with that and obviously taking into account, you know, their music or drama commitments and their academic commitments. I think it's a real testament to those 14 athletes. Moving down to the middle school, 88 students, about half of the student body. Forty-six of those athletes were multi-sport and then eight three-season athletes. Talking with my fellow L.C. eight A.D.s, we're kind of in the middle as far as these numbers go with participation. It's just that then when we take a look at those numbers, as far as the hard numbers of that 160 and that 88, when we're the smallest school in the conference, right, we're still behind, right, 10 to 20 athletes compared to our other schools. And so it's just one of those things, but as far as like in the building and those percentages are on par with our L.C. eight other schools. And then just highlighting a lot of successes throughout the entire season. Boys', girls', soccer, volleyball, and just baseball this past Friday won their first-round playoff game. Baseball plays again tomorrow at Ripman in the district semifinal. Girls' cross-country were the L.C. eight runner-ups. Girls' basketball, our seventh graders were the L.C. eight runner-ups, nice, exciting season for them. Girls' basketball in these next two, kind of highlighting some of our first-year head coaches. Coach Howard Chambers got his first career win against Open Door. And Coach Crystal Hartshorn got her first career win against Cleveland Central Catholic this past spring. Baseball and softball, again, played their last seasons beyond the high school. And so it was nice to kind of do like a vintage jersey night with the baseball team and kind of recognizing those fields on senior nights. And then finally, track and field, very busy season, starting off with the district meet. Last week, our boy, Brandon Locke in the 400, our boys' four-by-qualified for the regionals. And then all, essentially, our girls' sprinters did a fantastic job. Across the board, all sprint relays qualified. And then most notably, our girls' four-by-two not only meet record at the district meet, meet record at the conference meet, but set the Division III state record, so all-time. So now their names are in the history books for the state. And more to come, they're running, starting to run tomorrow at North Royalton. Thank you so much. Did I put a nice little question there?
Yeah, I'm just curious as to where do the girls play bowling?
So they practice over at the college, at the college lanes, and then they're, both for the boys and girls for that matter. And then both are their home lanes or redmen in Lorain.
Oh, okay.
Is there a girls' golf?
There is not a formal girls' golf team because of the numbers, but we did have two ladies participate in the boys' team this season. And then as far as the early numbers, we have two more coming up that are going to be participating.
And how many do we need to have a dedicated girls' team?
Scoring five, scoring four, yeah, sorry, I should say four. Scoring four and so four would be the minimum. Any other questions? Yeah. And continuing on the conversation, it is a bit tough. We have 20 signed up, but 12 just denoted as like full-time golfers. So we had a lot of interest this past season with a couple of our football players and soccer players that started off. And since the golf season starts like two and a half weeks earlier than the other sports, they were able to participate in the early part of the season. But then they had a, they all chose their other fall sport, and so they kind of primarily did that. So as the coaches and as we're talking about numbers, that's kind of an important thing for me, like do we have a sustainable team throughout the entire season? Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great job. Thanks. Okay. Surprisingly impressed with our academics and also athletics from our student athletes, been doing a great job. Next, I have, I'd like to do a presentation on our Ohio Evaluation System. This presentation is a 50,000-foot view of how we evaluate teachers and administrators and some of our staff members. So this, it's a brief one, so there's more, it's more complicated than what I probably give you. I'm just going to give you brief information today of how that works. The Ohio Evaluation System is how we evaluate our teachers from O-Tess. It stands for, probably use a couple of academics like in education where I always use those words, use those there. It calls O-Tess, Ohio Teacher Evaluation Systems, and Ohio School Counselor Evaluation System, O-SAS, and Ohio Principal Evaluation System, O-Pass. So those are the three evaluation systems we utilize to evaluate our teachers and also our administrators and also our counselors as well. And on top there, you'll see the Ohio State Board of Education. Administrators have to sign in to complete the evaluations for all three of these individuals too as well. So we have to sign in and follow and put, place the information inside of this system. O-Tess is a teacher negotiated agreement. We utilize that piece for the O-Tess system, the Ohio Evaluation System for the teachers. And also O-SAS is for the guidance counselors and we utilize that for the social workers as well. O-Pass utilizes that evaluation system for the principals, assistant principals, director of people services, director of curriculum instruction, and special programs, and director of student family support, our athletic director and operations director. So that's the system I utilize to evaluate the principals, assistant principals, and people services. Most of the people in our O-Pass are the ones I evaluate, except for the two assistant principals, which our curriculum director evaluates. There's also a fourth evaluation piece that is, those are others. So we have some other individuals, which is part of the union, that's not under the O-Tess piece, like school psychologists or our non-representant staff, like our secretaries and people, some people in central office. So that's a separate set that we have to utilize as well. Those are forms that we utilize for them to evaluate them. Of course, if we're evaluating anybody, you're going to have to be in a negotiated agreement, so we have to choose a form and we have to utilize that form to evaluate them. Evaluation components, components of evaluations, you have the O-Tess and O-Pass. Originally, it started off with O-Tess 1.0 and now it's 2.0. And also our administrators have O-Pass 2.0, so we're up to 2.0 now. The framework provides, I'll go into more of the framework later, but it also provides standards, domains, certain criteria that we have to provide, that we have to evaluate the teachers on. The framework is approved by the Ohio Department of Education as well. So those are things that we have to automatically evaluate them with as far as the observations, certain ones we have to do with them. High-quality student data, that's a component of the evaluation piece for our teachers, also for our counselors and also for our principals as well, our administrators as well. High-quality student data is evaluated, evaluated, used that in a form instruction, approved student learning process for determining, a process for determining the HQSD, high-quality student data. It's not just individuals can pick, well, I want to evaluate on this test, this test. It has to be approved by a system first. So the teachers will have to go through an evaluation system where, okay, fine, that's a group of teachers, group administrators will approve what they can utilize as their high-quality student data. Use this quantitative data that we utilize, whether it's a certain test, whether it's our eye-ready, our ready, those components. But it has to be go through a process for that. It's not just just approving one thing or another, but the committee has to approve that piece for them to initiate it as high-quality student data. The state creates a criteria of what determines high-quality student data, so you just can't say, well, a spelling test is going to be my high-quality student data. So the state kind of gives you certain things that can be there. But a lot of times, it's more quantitative data. So it's more, like stated before, complicated than just, I'm just going to choose this and this. It's a committee ensuring that, you know, it's evaluative of the student's progress. Item three is performance evaluation rubric. The rubric define, you have ineffective teachers and those who going through the evaluation system can be graded on effective, developing, skilled, or accomplished. Those are the three ratings that they can get, or sorry, four ratings that they can get. And it gives you a criteria of those ratings as well. Professional growth plan. Everyone is completing Ohio Evaluation System, will create either a professional growth plan or improvement plan. Professional growth plans are a teacher or administrator saying, these are some areas that I want to grow on, whether it's improving discipline or my skills on of staff meetings or delivering instruction or soft skills I'd like to work on as well. So the PGP Professional Growth Plan are determined by the evaluator and also the evaluatee. So they get together, look at the data, and it's more of a process of saying, hey, okay, this one I will grow on, this is what I've noticed. Their improvement plan is different, the PGP is a little different. If we know that someone is having difficulty in some areas, we may want to put them on improvement plan to say, hey, maybe these are some critical areas that you need to work on. So if we identify an administrator or a teacher or someone through the O-Tess, O-Pass, there's a certain criteria that you have to, you can put them on improvement plan for. You can't just say, hey, today I'm going to put you in improvement plan. So improvement plans are done fairly where it's a history of areas may want to be identified to saying, hey, he has a history of problems here. I may want to put him on improvement plan, but a specific criteria for that to happen to place someone on improvement plan. An objective of improvement plan is never to let go of individual, but it's also to monitor and hopefully they improve. Required educators evaluation training. Not everyone can evaluate teachers or principals or administrators. To be credentialed as a evaluator inside of Ohio Evaluation System, there's a list of individuals that are qualified to evaluate teachers and evaluate principals to conduct these evaluations. Everyone that's able to evaluate teachers or principals or administrators, they go through a one to three-day training that they have to go through. And also have to pass a test, an online assessment as well. Sometimes people don't pass a test to evaluate them, they have to keep taking the test over and over again to initiate evaluation piece. So it's just the average person off the street, can I just come in and say, I'm going to evaluate this person? But you have to go through a recognized program to be able to evaluate teachers and administrators. You also have to renew your evaluation, evaluation credentials every so often, whether it's one year or two years that you have to renew them. So in order to evaluate a teacher and administrator and even a counselor, you have to go through the step of renewing them. So to go through the step renewing them, you have to take a test again. So you have to pass that test in order to qualify to do, to conduct the evaluation on them. The evaluation format, they're very similar for teachers and administrators as well. You have domain, standards, indicators, levels of performance for them. For O-Pass standards, these are the O-Pass standards, there are 10 standards in O-Pass. The domains are listed to the left, leadership, learning, culture, management. And you have the standards one to, one through 10. Now, you work with them, you don't have to fill out one through 10 on someone that you're evaluating. Even a teacher's wise, when they have their own different standards they have to go through. These right here, right now, are the O-Pass for principals or administrators. So for example, if you have an administrator that just may be doing ethics and professional norms, so you may want to be developing in certain areas of that too as well. So, but you don't have to have a standard two or have to complete standard one through 10. Somebody may have a standard two, standard four, and a standard six they're focusing on during an observation period. And that's determined at your pre-conference that you have and working with your administrators and also your teachers. So the whole process is very, very collaborative. This is an example of the O-Pass rubric that we have to follow. So when evaluating principals, do you have your standard there? School improvement is one of the standards, standard number three. And they'll give you a criteria there on to the left of what that means. The indicators you have in the middle there, standard three have 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4. And you have the levels of performance here, from ineffective to accomplish are the grading scale for them. So some of these areas- So some of these areas here, like school improvements, you have indicator three point one, three point two, three point three, and three point four. I may evaluate administrator and they're in three point one, the effective educational leaders develop, and then I'll have to find and go through the criteria whether administrators are ineffective through accomplished in three point one. Now I may evaluate the administrator on three point one, or three point three, or three point four, but it's still in that standard area. So within each standard, you have indicators, you may have four, five indicators or one or two indicators in there that you had to evaluate them on. So, and you look at a criteria for accomplished, and even before we even start, administrators start the process, we even go through the rubric and a, a exercise of saying, what is accomplished, what is it like between ineffective, what is it like between developing and skilled? In order to receive the credentials, you actually have to watch a video of teaching or administrator, then you have to grade them, and then you have to align with whatever they, they felt during that video of, we felt this person was accomplished, and we have to kinda grade them on what we feel that person is, and it should be aligning. So if you don't align it right, then you won't get your credentials. You look at a rubric on accomplished, now this is, you know, accomplished, we always look at accomplished, everyone wants to be accomplished, but skilled, developing, those are not bad things to me. Accomplished, administrative develops capacity of staff as leaders and utilizes effective, collaborative structures that promote an disintegration of data that clearly identifies areas of need and exposes root cause. A lot of times, you notice accomplished is more a routine basis, this person is doing this almost, almost every other day. You're seeing it's constant for this person in accomplished realm. Right here is the OTAS similar format, so they try to align the OPAS, OTAS, and OSAS evaluation kind of together. So you have the domains, you have components, you have ineffective, developing, skilled, accomplished. Levels of performance are consistent from OTAS, OSAS, and also with OPAS, the teachers, the counselors, and also the administrative one as well. The evaluation, base evaluation, evidence, sorry, evidence-based evaluation, it's just not something that you say, well, this person's administrator or teacher's done it one time or two times. It's multiple times. There's a certain criteria that we have to go through, which I'll talk about in a minute here. It's multiple sources of evidence. Evaluators gather evidence from various sources, including observations, student data, stakeholders, feedback, and a principal's self-assessment. It's all this data getting together to make a holistic assessment. At the end of the evaluation periods that we do, the observations and a walkthroughs, we put them all together and we create a holistic assessment, a holistic evaluation based on this information, our observations that we see, and information, data that we have. Then we'll make a final holistic assessment to the, put it in the system, and we go over that actually with the teachers too, or with administrator. Now, a lot of times, you see our administrators and our teachers go through the process and saying, hey, it takes a long time. Now, all the, it depends on what level of teaching you're at, whether you're receiving skilled or accomplished last year, depends on how many observations you get. For the most part, there's a pre-conference, then you have to go, you go over that with the teachers or with the person you're evaluating. Professional growth plan, you go over that with them as well. Formal observations, you usually do two formal observations, sometimes one, depending on whether teachers was rated skilled or developing, or whether they were rated accomplished or not. That may lower their, how many formal observations they have to do. But normally, it's two formal observations of thirty minutes. So you match all the teachers in the district, our most, our majority, our principals have to go into classrooms at least twice for thirty minutes, do a pre-conference and a post-conference with them, also meet with them by the professional growth plan or improvement plan with them at the same time. We also do informal observations where they're called walkthroughs, so we may walk through several different classrooms. Usually, there's anywhere between two to ten to twelve walkthroughs that we put in the system. So occasionally, we go through in the morning time, may do a walkthrough, or sitting on a meeting, or a teacher-based team meeting and say, you know what, I'm gonna consider this a walkthrough. Now, when you do your walkthroughs, it's not mandatory, but usually go over reflective period with them. A teacher, you may walk through the classroom and say, in the morning time, I'm just gonna walk through, see how it's going. Then you take notes, and you meet with a teacher and tell them, look, on this walkthrough, I observed this. But that's also, like I said, anywhere between two to ten to fifteen or so walkthroughs they may do with individual. Same through administrators. All those individuals I conduct the OPAS with, I do walk through their buildings, talk to them about the walkthroughs, whether I'm observing morning activities, a coffee chat. A lot of times, parents see me in a coffee chats and see me at different things with the principals. Those times are pretty much, I'm observing them at the same time. Okay? Administrators, performance evaluation rubric, they have to go through the rubric and then we have to align what we saw with where's it fit in the rubric at, whether they need help in this area, whether it's not, whether it's skilled or developing in certain areas. Of course, you have your student growth measures, your final subnote conference you have as well. The student growth measure, student growth data is a factor in overall evaluation. So we looked at all of the evaluation pieces, our, our data on our students too, and those are evaluative as well. So the way we look at our kindergarten readiness exam, our OST data, we look at I-ready data, we look at different datas from quantitative to qualitative data, we look at youth truth data, all those things go into the evaluative piece as well, and we discuss those with our teachers or whoever we're evaluating, our principals as well too. Then all this information, data comes together, then you do a final holistic rating on that individuals you're, that you're evaluating. And it comes with a conversation with them, and the conversation sometimes lasts about an hour or between hour to two hours with them. For sometimes, my administrative team, I actually have them do it like a binder, and they place artifacts inside that binder, and what happens is with different components in there, and they'll go through them, okay, fine, this is some things I made and catched or didn't see. Maybe there was a couple administrators that I didn't see a couple of events that they attended. I wanted to see them, I just didn't make the time to do it, I just didn't have the time to do it. So they will have it in a binder and show, okay, doc, this is right what I did, this is what I did as well. We'll always tell them too, in a binder, I don't wanna see fifty staff meetings, I know you're doing staff meetings. So just make sure there's, not just pad up your binder, so just, I like to see one or two examples of artifacts that you're doing. And that concludes our evaluative piece that we work with our principals, our teachers, our counselors on to as well. And we also evaluate OC staff. They have a different criteria that we evaluate them on, like the cleaners and custodians as well. So we conduct all those evaluations on our teaching staff. That's why you see a lot of our principals saying, hey, I could use some help because they're evaluating these individuals. Even at times, I, I'm still able to evaluate teachers, I tell them my credentials, Mr. Ibel does, and Ms. Baker does as well. So sometimes, when our principals are out for extended leave of time or something happens, we step in and evaluate teachers too if needed. I think our staff would rather have someone internally evaluate them than somebody externally evaluate them because we know them. So that's why we keep our credentials up, especially in central office, so we can step in and conduct those evaluations. As you see, our teachers, our principals probably average anywhere between ten, fifteen, or twenty or so evaluations. I would say flip, what, fifteen or?
Fifteen to twenty.
Fifteen to twenty. So fifteen to twenty, she's doing the half-hour observations, the conferences, preconferences, postconferences, to fifteen to twenty individuals.
Fifteen to twenty per year?
Yes. Yes. And then I'll do the administrators and the principals, so I'll probably do about maybe seven to eight a year with the same process with them. So we're constantly doing evaluative pieces, it's a lot on them. And then we have those conversations with our teachers, and that may take a half, a half hour, maybe an hour or so, maybe two hours it'll take. So we have to set that time aside between everything else we have to do to make sure to get evaluative, evaluative pieces. That's fifteen to twenty, that's just, Mrs. Weber's doing them, but we also, she also has an assistant that's also doing it as well. So we're always constant.
So does everyone get evaluated annually?
They get some form of an evaluation, yes. Some form of evaluation. No one gets a year off. They get some form, unless they're retiring, and then they do fifty percent of the year, then we have certain criterias where we're gonna say, you know what, we can stop. If they're only here half a year, a certain amount of time, then you can say, you know what, they're not here enough, it's okay. Fortunately, Mr. Ibel and some of the retirees on here submitted a little later, so they still have to go through the evaluation process. So everyone gets some form of evaluation, whether it's OC or anyone, everyone gets evaluated every year. Did I do a great job, my administrative staff? Okay. And that concludes how we conduct our evaluation with them. Any questions? Thank you. And next, we have our. Our facilities update. Mr. Ibel, this will be Mr. Ibel's. Facilities update.
Good evening, folks. How are you? Happy May already. We do have some things to, to talk briefly about tonight and bring for full circle. So the cafeteria RFP, we talked about that last month. Bob has done a great job collecting those RFPs. We did have the walkthroughs where companies wanted to submit a proposal to us, they had to come, walk through the facilities. We had six show up for that a week or so ago. Of those six, three of them actually submitted proposals that met the guidelines. So I know moving forward, I think June third, we're looking at, you're looking at interviewing three of those companies. So the committee has been selected, and I know that I think people who have been invited have gotten an email on that. So Dr. Hall and Bob will be, will be taking you through that, again with the goal of the June board meeting, selecting a company, which will move us forward for our cafeteria It wouldn't be a update without an Eastwood update. It's, it's still in the same place it's been. The Oberlin Land Trust is, is interested, they, trying to work out not the deal, but necessarily the details of the deal. Dan DiNacola has been instrumental in trying to push that forward. I was unable to complete that, but Dan, again, has it on his plate to move forward with that. Nothing has changed other than trying to get the, the sign-offs on it, so.
And when you say that, just for clarification, we're still, we're waiting on the port, port authority?
Yeah, the, the legal documents, right? The letter and the legal documents of who's gonna take care of what, and what that third party is. So the Port Authority, again, the first port that we worked with, didn't feel comfortable in their ability to, to tackle that, so we went with the company that we were gonna work with originally, the Port Authority, and, and they, again, have experience in doing these three school de- not school deals, but three people deals, three company deals. So we're just, again, with attorneys going back and forth, and you'll have it soon, I hope. I don't know. Dr. Hall, would you? You've been a little closer than I have.
We have three attorneys currently, so you have three attorneys all working together on it, where you have the, the Port Authority is attorney, and you have our attorneys, and you have the Land Trust attorney. So all of them are trading things back and forth and documents, and having them sign, okay, gotta change this, so it takes, it's legal, it takes a little time, we want this changed, and, not really, but, so they're all communicating back and forth. We, we're hope to have this done, more solid deals, mostly over the summer piece.
And when you change that third party, then you change the attorneys that they're working with, and then you basically start all over.
Yes.
From a voice of experience.
There is still no end in sight, but we are inching closer?
Yeah. There are, everybody, there are interested parties, and it's just a matter of coming to shaking the hand and getting it finished. The, the goals of the district are still the same goals it's been, and the goals of the Land Trust, again, with providing housing. Again, those are all still there, it's just a matter of finalizing it and getting it where you want it to be. Summer cleaning and updates to the schedule, we've got that rolling. It's gonna start as soon as next week, so as soon as the students and teachers get, teachers never get out of here, teachers are here all the time, so we'll be cleaning around them as they're picking up their desks. But we're getting started with that all next week. We've hired some summer workers to come in and help, to give some more support if the cleaning, if the cleaners weren't available this summer. So typically, you know, the evening cleaners have time off in the summer as well, like teachers do, they work a couple weeks after the school year and a couple weeks before the school year, and we do give them an opportunity to come in and work over the summer, some part-time hours. Some take us up on that, some don't. So, again, we've offered that to some people at sub-rate and have some people coming in to do that. So should have plenty of help this summer to get a lot of things done. But they will not be installing air conditioning at the high school, so we've contracted out, and you'll see that on your agenda coming up. Couple of those spaces, we still don't have air conditioning in the high school, the choir room and the band room's been a hundred degrees forever, and we've moved forward on some mini split units with that, and that's in front of you tonight with air conditioning, the choir and the band room this summer. So not at this time, so we're still trying to get that done as far as costs and projects, and, and hopefully, the following summer, you can kinda piece that out, but it's, it's kinda been left off this time. We did look at it, but it's.
The multipurpose room is largest, larger room, so with the choir and the band room, both of those two are being done this summer, and with the multipurpose rooms actually will require a couple more, a unit, another unit in there. So we decided to do those two rooms, and next summer, we'll work on those other, the multipurpose room. So it is in our mix too, in phase two of that project to get the multipurpose room back.
No, it's, it's good. So that's really all I've got tonight. Questions?
You know what we wanna ask you. But I won't.
I appreciate it. And again, I, my retirement resignation is on the agenda coming up. It's just time. It's thirty-two plus years for me in education, over seventeen here in Oberlin. I can't believe I've been over half my career here in Oberlin. I've had the pleasure of working with a lot of your children, and again, I just wanna say thank you for, again, allowing me the opportunity in the trust to be here for so many years in many, many, many capacities. Oberlin schools are in a great place, you've got good people in charge, you've got good hires to progress things through, for sure, and I feel great about the people who we put in place to, to finish up. So the reason I kinda did it now, I would've been thirty-three years halfway through, I'm kinda on the half-year cycle, 'cause I subbed and coached my first year out for half a year. So I was gonna go until next January, February, but thank goodness, the State Teacher Retirement Board changed it and moved it down another year to thirty-two years for unreduced benefits, and they did that just before Easter. So that kinda sped up my timeline to say, well, if I can go for unreduced benefits and I'm gonna go at the out, at the end of this year. So, again, I just, just the timing. So, I appreciate it though, and thank you guys all, for sure.
Thank you for all you've done for the kids in Oberlin.
Denied.
And I wanna say thank you for your willingness to step up and wear different hats. You've worn a bunch of different hats just since I've been on this board, let alone since my children and my family came to this district. And then I always give Mr. Ibel a lot of credit because my oldest son was a handful, and when he came over prospect as a principal, he was a breath of fresh air. So thank you for everything that you have done over all these seventeen years, and as much as I wanna vote against this, it is your decision.
Let me retire, right?
We appreciate it.
I completed my contract, let me retire.
And some, and some, so thank you.
That's for sure. Thank you, guys. Thanks.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to move to executive session pursuant to revised code one two one point two two G one, to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official.
So moved?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any questions, any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yep.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Macker?
Yes. Okay, we will go into executive session, and then we will return to regular session shortly. Okay, we will go into executive session and then we will return to regular session shortly.
Denied. Denied.
He said, "We found something for you to do."
Hey Jim, did you go in the conference room? There's a nice water spot.
Yep, waiting for you.
I think the air conditioner's drain plugs clogged.
Just don't talk till Friday.
He said, "Yeah, I'm like, what?" Sticking on the water spot.
He's got a coat of paint.
Okay, I'd like to, are we, we good to call back the, okay, call the meeting back in the session? So I'll entertain a motion to return to regular session?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded? Did you hear the second?
No.
It was sharp, Charlie, did you second it?
Yeah.
Is everybody's mic on?
Yes, yes.
Uh, okay, so, any questions, concerns, discussion for that motion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Katson?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Snagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Okay, next, I will entertain a motion to approve Board Items A through D.
So moved.
Second.
C.
Oh, the C, I'm sorry, C, not D, C. Well, you know, there's different, they're separated out. So A through C, who moved? Me. Okay.
I moved.
I second.
Okay. Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded. The three items are approval of the April twenty-second, twenty twenty-five regular session minutes, approval of the resolution authorizing the treasurer and the superintendent to act on behalf of the school district board of education related to the construction of the new middle school six-eight building, and approval of the mutual letter of support with the city of Oberlin and Omega Development Group. Are there any questions or discussion? Do I need to read the resolution? Okay. Any question?
I guess I'd just like to have a, a small discussion about what the letter with the Omega Development Group is.
Yes, and I, let me pull up what I have to share. So, that is a letter of support for construction that is going to occur in the southern part of the city. And give me one second so that I can give you some more details. Okay, so it is a development that is located off of US Route twenty and State Route fifty-eight. Uh, it's kind of near Walmart, and it includes mixed-use facilities, so, um, it's a very large parcel with, let's see, a recovery home, multi-family housing, townhouses, and retail. And there's going to be men recover, men's recovery house with twenty-six beds, sixteen parking spaces, a women's recovery house with twenty-six beds, and fourteen parking spaces, and a manager's home with three bedrooms. There's gonna be a multi-family housing, which has a hundred and twenty total units. Forty-eight of those units will be one-bedroom, forty-eight will be two-bedroom, twenty-four will be three-bedroom, with a total of a hundred and ninety-three parking spaces. There'll be market-rate townhouses, there'll be a hundred and forty-four of those with one, two, and three bedrooms, and there'll be two-hundred and thirty-two parking spaces associated with that. And then there'll be twenty-eight thousand two hundred square feet of retail space with a hundred and thirty-four parking spaces. It will also include a community garden and dog park with parking spaces, uh, twenty-six parking spaces. So, it is a project that is going to provide mixed-use, uh, housing as well as retail, uh, for the Oberlin community, which is something that we've talked about as a board for a long time, and we're actually working to try to support with our Eastwood project, but we haven't been successful yet. Um, this development company, Omega, is asking for the school board to sign on to just being supportive of that development. Um, and do I have, let's see if there's anything in this letter that I also... The property is specifically located at one four eight six eight State Route fifty-eight. And it just gives ju, a general summary of what I just stated in detail. And it will provide an economic stimulus to the city through the addition of retail operations and increased income tax basis, the provision of public utilities and real property tax revenue, which we could all benefit from. The resulting revenue will benefit both the city and the school district. In addition, the anticipated income range of residents within the development will facilitate diversity within the Oberlin schools and the Oberlin community at large. Um, now, I already talked about where it is. And it says that the city and the school district have the resources and capacity to accommodate the development's benefits and to service its needs. Uh, so, one thing that I know, and I don't know if you want to mention this, but we kind of wanted to hear a little bit from Dr. Hall. With the building of the new middle school, will we be able to, say there's a bunch of kids that come into that development, um, as a result of there being more housing, multi-family housing, will we be able to accommodate those new students?
Yes, we'll be able to accommodate them from K to twelve as well. We have space available for them at the elementary and also the middle and high school as well to accommodate them.
Uh, so that's the information that I have to provide. If anybody has any specific questions, I'm happy to address them.
I'm just hoping that, Bob, can you just explain how, um, an increased tax base would be good for all of the current taxpayers?
Um, currently, it would affect the, um, our PI levies, our tech levies, our emergency levy. They would see that as property values rise, the millage on those fall. Also, on our bond issue, that will start to fall also. So, as more people join, those, those grants can only collect a certain amount of money. So, everybody would pay less as we add property value to that. Now, we are on the twenty-mill floors, but that twenty-mills would just stay constant.
So it's the same amount of money, it would just be spread over more people than we currently have?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, that doesn't work with the income tax, because we wouldn't collect the income tax on the new people.
Right.
But then we'll have more money.
Yes.
Right. Any other questions or comments related to, yeah, any of those items?
Um, so... Why, why? I mean, it's nice, but is that a requirement for us to be part of it? I have, I mean...
It's not a requirement for us to be part of it. I mean, it would be helpful for the community to know that the school board is supportive of this development. I think that's why they're asking for us to sign this letter. Um, it's just to show of support. It's not gonna, you know, it's one thing that they can reference as they move forward with their development, but it's not required for them to, for them to continue with what they're doing. It's not, it's, we don't have to agree to sign this, um...
I don't have a problem with it. I was just like, why are we...
But we can only, I can only sign this letter if everyone here, well, if, if the, if we pass it as a board. Not every single person has to agree, but it has to pass in order for me to sign it on behalf of the board. Because I can't, you know, by myself, I'm just me. Any other question? I'm, I'm, we can keep talking about it, because, yeah.
Is there any, is there anything else we should consider or that we should know?
Are you sure your mic is on?
I don't know. It's on.
Hello?
Oh, there you go.
Is there anything else we should be considering that we should know? I mean...
I, this has been on the, um, I mean, this has been in the works for, I've known about it for over three years. So this is just something, they want to make sure that the entire community is on board with it so that, again, their council is working on their whole process of getting these projects moved forward quicker. Um, and that's really what this is for, is to say the school feels that it has capacity enough to accept any students that would be generated from this property.
Right.
And we think it would be a benefit, yeah, and then we think it would be a benefit to the community too.
And I, I noticed that John Clark also is a signatory on that letter.
Well, so that's where the letter, the city started with the letter and asked if we'd be willing to also sign and support. And so, we've had this letter for a little while, asking for, legal counsel has reviewed it, has, you know, approved the, the language of it. And, you know, we were advised to just make sure that we talk about it so that the community can have, yeah.
That's, that's good to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was kind of like, huh?
I know, Mike.
That's good to know.
I should have said that earlier.
No, that's good, I mean, I'm glad I asked.
Thank you, me too. Anything else? Okay, hearing no other questions, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Katson?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Okay, next, I will entertain a motion for, uh, no, to approve Board Item D.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly moved and seconded. Board Item D is approval of the resolution to declare the necessity to renew an existing two-point-oh-mill tax levy for the purpose of general permanent improvements and to request the Lorain County Auditor to make the required certifications pursuant to sections fifty-seven oh five point oh three and fifty-seven oh five point two-one of the Ohio Revised Code. Um, I, are there any questions or anything? I, I actually have one, but does anybody else have any questions about this?
This is the first motion for the PI levy to be on the November ballot. This is the levy that currently, each year, the board votes to only collect one mill of it. That was part of the agreement of building the elementary until it comes a time when we will need to start funding the maintenance agreement once we become a part of the OSFC project. But right now, currently, we don't have to fund that, and the district doesn't need that money with the new middle school coming online to hopefully keep the older buildings repaired.
So with this renewal, will we continue to just collect the one mill? Is that what you're saying?
That will be, the board will decide that in January.
Got it. And then I, so I have a general question. Um, I know that there was on the ballot in this month a constitutional amendment that I thought had something to do with levies. There's something about replacement levies or, is, is it related at all?
No, not to this type. It's a different type of levy.
Okay, so are replacement levies now gone? Or can they still do them?
It depends. They can do replacement levies, but they're not allowed to do the same purpose as what they were, where they raised the value.
Okay.
So they don't, they can't replace it and make it a higher value. And then every time there's a reevaluation, that value gets higher, so the school district continues to increase their growth.
Okay, without really going back to the taxpayer to get their specific approval. And so a renewal isn't, is not that. Can you, can you explain what the difference is?
With this, this renewal was set when it was originally passed at two mills. So it can never generate more except for new construction than those two mills. So currently, we are collecting, I think it's one point three, or actually, we're collecting point seven of a mill because we're not collecting, if we were collecting it in full, we would be collecting one point four mills. Because as time goes, the effective millage keeps on dropping. And this is outside of the twenty-mill floor, so the PI levy will always continue to go down so that it only collects from the people that originally voted it in. Those property values, as they increase, will be dispersed amongst everybody.
Okay.
I guess that's the easiest way to try it.
Yeah, that's not, that doesn't sound easy at all. Okay, so it's a, it's a renewal, it means it stays at the same, no, okay. Anybody else have any questions on that? Okay, hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Katson?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Ameca?
Yes. Next, I will entertain a motion to approve Board Item E.
Moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, Item E is the approval of the resolution to submit to the electors of the school district the question of the renewal of an existing tax levy pursuant to sections fifty-seven oh five point oh three and fifty-seven oh five point one nine four to fifty-seven oh five one nine seven of the Ohio Revised Code.
And this is the renewal of the, um, emergency levy that was originally passed in two thousand and eleven. Um, we're asking to change it from a five-year renewal to a ten-year renewal. And again, this... And again, this was originally put on the ballot to collect nine hundred and forty million dollars, or thousand, nine hundred and forty thousand dollars. And currently this year, it's projected to generate nine hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. So it doesn't increase and the millage, it was originally passed at four mils and now we're collecting below three mils.
So clarifying question, we're asking for these both to go on the ballot in November? So we will have two renewals?
Two issues on the ballot, yes. And then next year we'll have two more, the technology fund and the income tax, yes.
And what is this emergency fund used for?
Uh, um, operating money. It's general fund operating money. So pay teacher salaries, benefits, buy supplies for kids, technology. When our technology budget runs out of money.
So it's a, it's kind of like a backup?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Semeca?
Yes. Next I will entertain a motion to approve Treasurers Items A through D.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, Bob.
Okay, I'm doing most of the talking here. Month of April, um, we ended the month with forty-seven million, nine hundred twenty-four thousand, three hundred twenty-one dollars and sixteen cents. Again, twenty-three million dollars of that is for the construction of the new middle school. Um, we had twenty-one thousand, seventy-six dollars and nine cents in outstanding warrants. We balanced to the penny, um, with the bank and our accounting system. For the month, we brought in negative eleven thousand, eight hundred eighty-six dollars and seventy-six cents in interest. The reason that is, is because we invested that twenty-three million dollars. And with interest rates high, you have to pay a premium with bonds and the money that we're investing. So we have to pay off the interest that that person would have made by, when we bought it. And so we'll get all that money back, but it's just how it works when you're investing, when you're buying commodities off the market that aren't being sold for the first time. So this is standard practice. It used to happen a lot more, but with interest rates so low and now they're high, um, our portfolio will bring in a little bit over four percent, which hopefully during the construction would raise another two million dollars that we can use for LFIs and overruns on the project, which we already have the overruns because they're estimating it to be about two million dollars higher than our thirty million dollars. So, um. Any questions there? Okay, I will skip the five-year report because we're going to do a little presentation of the five-year report. So we'll jump right into that. Every May and every November, we have to submit our five-year forecast. I've got five slides here that I will hopefully do an upper about. We did meet with the finance committee. This has been going over with them. Um, it is ready to go to the state. But this shows our revenues from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-nine. You can see that they're, have an increase and then they flatten out. Um, with what's going on right now in the budget proceedings, I have stayed very conservative on our increases. We did just have our reevaluation with the county auditor. So we're locked in pretty much for the next three years on the real estate side, our real estate taxes. And also with our income taxes, those have flattened out since COVID. We've gotten all the money back that was backlash during the COVID and they gave extensions for people to file them. So the orange that you see, the first orange you see is the half of the emergency levy that we're going to be voting on in November. If we don't get that passed, we will lose five hundred and five thousand dollars. The next year is the full, um, the full value since we collect our tax dollars January through December, but our fiscal year is July through June. So each year, we're only getting half of new levies or renewal levies. The third year, you see that huge increase and that's because it kicks in for the income tax that we'll be putting on the ballot for next November. So that's why you see those, but you still see a gradual decline in not knowing what they're going to do with property tax if they're going to take away the twenty mil floor. I've left everything status quo. Um, I'm using more or less what the governor approved, what they're going to do with state funding and showing that we would lose money in state funding. And the House took state funding. They, they approved state funding, but then said that ODE was not allowed to pay school districts off of it. So they just developed a number and said, this is what we're going to spend. So that's really in essence what the current House bill let, or motion does. And now they're caucusing and I think we can forget about the thirty, I think that's up to fifty percent now and hopefully going to go higher. But there's enough business people in the Senate that they're saying thirty, thirty percent of your expenses isn't enough to carry over. So we should not have a problem there, we're hoping, but we don't know what's going to happen June thirtieth at ten o'clock at night.
But you'll let us know.
We'll let you know. Um, next slide is just breaking up that. So as you can see, real estate and income taxes are two highest. Um, income, state funding is third. Um, and then we have restricted, we have others and, um, the other one that I'm missing. Income tax, state funding. Oh, other sources and other operating revenue, so. Um, that's really, but again, we used to be, when I got here in two thousand nineteen, we were thirty-three, thirty-three, and thirty-three. Now income tax is up to about thirty-nine, real estate's up to thirty-five, and state is right around thirty.
And is federal somewhere in that black?
Federals and other, yes, up top. And that's what you're seeing there is, um, the last part of COVID money, the ESIR's money. So that's why you're seeing that, um, so. Okay?
What's the green?
The green is all other state. Um, that's homestead and rollback. So we get about six hundred thousand dollars a year in homestead and rollback. The state is paying for elderly people and residents in their buildings to live in their properties.
And the orange, public utilities is?
That's, that's the, um, nexus. Most of it's nexus, yes. And they did make final payment, so we will get that in August. So I don't know how much it is. They haven't got the exact numbers yet, but, um, they should be paid up in paying to what the settlement was for. So yes. Expense-wise, same thing. You see the, the blimp in two thousand twenty-three is when they decided that students would, they would stop passing money through the district to pay charter schools and others, and voucher programs. So that's why you see a huge spike there is because that was the expenses and now we don't pay that other tuition. Um, you see that it's constantly going up in the next slide because again, we do pay, we have negotiated agreements. Three and a half was last, this current year, and we're at three percent for the next two years. So that is all built into the forecast. We also have healthcare in there. Luckily with our consortium, we're averaging a little bit over six percent when you look at the last ten years' history, even though last two years ago, we saw a thirteen percent increase in healthcare. But we're looking to, that should be out of double digits this year. And now you can see the salaries, we are, they set eighty percent as a measurement to keep salary and benefits below eighty percent. And as you can see, we are under the eighty percent line. The gray being purchased services. And that piece, we'll see a large intake this year in that because we went from zero kids in special needs schools to seven kids in special needs schools this year. So, um, we do, we went from no van run to two van runs every morning and afternoon. So we will see an increase in that, but we are doing a great job making sure that the kids are getting what they need and we're not really looking at cost. It's what is this kid, who's going to serve those kids the best? And Sheila's doing a great job with working out these arrangements with districts and stuff, so. But that is really the biggest part of it. And the orange that you see there is the notes. Um, when we sold our bonds for the elementary, we decided at the time when we first issued the bonds, we didn't issue all of them because the money wasn't needed. So we waited so that we weren't wasting dollars on interest. Then we sold five million dollars in bonds and two point nine million dollars in notes. Because at that time, again, interest rates, we weren't sure where they were going and we didn't want to waste interest dollars long-term. Um, it worked out to the best because with COVID and that influx of ESIR's money, the district decided, the finance committee met, and we decided to borrow money from ourselves to pay those notes off. And that's what you see, the huge spike in that orange is, is us paying two point nine million dollars in notes off. And now the general fund is, as, as the bond money comes in, the bond fund is repaying the general fund. So, and there's no interest being moved then. So we're saving about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in interest that we would have been paying if we would have financed that. Um, and then this is just, I tried to get it in one slide. I cut out a bunch of lines, but it's just showing the five-year forecast. The red lines show our deficits in revenue, um, so that you can actually see the levies as, as the renewal and when they would be collected. Even though we're putting this on this November in two thousand twenty-five, we won't collect until two, January of two thousand twenty-seven. And then same thing with income tax. We'll put that on next year in twenty-six, but we won't receive any dollars from it until twenty-eight. Um, and then the bottom line is, it just shows the need to have these renewals is because as you can see, the under and over of revenue, we, starting in two thousand twenty-seven, our revenue will not be enough to maintain our expenses, so. Any questions? And then if this is approved, we'll submit it. We actually submitted it today to make sure there was no errors. So it should hit the website tomorrow or Thursday. So that everybody, and then it will also be linked to our front page so that people can go to the treasurer's page on our website and view the forecast and all the assumptions for that also. Um, last thing is each year we renew, um, our property liability and fleet insurance. Um, this year we did see a five percent increase. Um, uh, we are with a consortium called Schools of Ohio Risk Sharing Authority that gives us the highest coverage possible. Um, with Steve's help, we have the highest cyber security possible. Um, and it's all funded through this. And again, with everything that's been going on with cyber, a five percent increase in insurance cost isn't really that much when you think of what we could be out there. So, and then we have donations. We have Elizabeth Elrod for the flower pots in front of the Oberlin Board of Education. We have Ohio Educational Credit Union of a thousand dollars for the Special Olympics Hotel of,
One hundred.
Or a one hundred dollars, sorry. Hotel Oberlin for a hundred dollars. And LC Health and Dentistry, a hundred and fifty dollars for the Special Olympics, which they had a great time from what I've heard. I didn't get to go out this year, but. Yes. And that's all I have, Ms. President. Is there any other questions?
Hearing no questions, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Semeca?
Yes. Next I will entertain a motion to approve Superintendent's Consent Items A through K.
K five.
Right?
Yep.
Through K five. I need a motion.
Oh, second.
So that was Joanne and Rosa.
Yep.
What'd you say?
Sorry.
That's okay. I'm like, silence. Okay, um, Dr. Hall?
Okay, Item A. It's approval of the potential six-six graduates that will be graduating this Saturday at Finney Chapel. Item B is approval of transportation professional service contract, either field trips. They'll be taking place over the summer and end of school year for Oberlin College and Common Ground, some other areas. Item C is approval of overnight field trip for the power depend state tournament, um, to Ashland University. Item D is approval of the twenty-five, twenty-six Lorraine County Board of DD preschool agreement. Um, some of our students do attend that, um, the area of Lorraine County Board of DD.
So quick question, when is preschool, is preschool as in pre-four kindergarten?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
Approval of twenty-five, twenty-six mental health, addiction and recovery, Mars Board. This is an annual occurrence. Um, they provide training, um, SEL support for our students as well. Um, just to clarify too, Item D is for Lorraine County Board of DD. This is just to allow us, if we do have students, to pretend there we can. Um, Item F is approval of twenty-five, twenty-six ESC pep, um, positive education program. Well, this is the same agreement as well. If we have students that, um, need to attend there, um, and are signed there, this is allow us to, um, to have slots for us there to, to actually attend, our students to attend there. Item G is approval of bus maintenance shared agreement with New London Local School Districts. This has been very, very, very positive over the last several years, um, the agreement between New London and, um, Oberlin City Schools of cost savings for the district with the bus agreement. And it's a three-year agreement with them. Item H is approval of installed air conditioning in two music rooms. Um, as stated previously, these are being placed in the band room and also the choir room. And the next step phase will be in the multipurpose room. The multipurpose room units are larger and require, um, additional funding, but we have not forgotten about the multipurpose room. That's on the next scheduled, um, activity for us in next summer. Um, and, yes.
It says Hammond Constitution. Is that right?
Shimmy Construction.
Somebody is reading the news.
Yes.
Spell check.
Yes.
That wouldn't have worked. It wouldn't have caught it.
And it's been looked at by several people, still didn't caught, still no one caught it. But however, the, the multipurpose room is a larger more expense and we're just going to do the two units and we'll have, hopefully we'll have those done by, um, beginning of school for our band and choir students. Item I is approval of appraisal and compensation of administrators. These are the benefits salary ranges for administrators, um, guidelines for us to utilize when we're hiring administrators. Item J is a second reading of the adoption of the budget preparation. Item K is a personnel report. Um, and Item K one, are some resignations on there. Um, I think we probably, I think we discussed singling out one. If you guys want to make a change of agenda, we could. So. But, um, we like to thank our people who are retiring. We have Mr. Betts who done a phenomenal job over at the high school as well with programs, culture and climate there. He's definitely made a huge impact. And also Mr. Ible for his years of service here in Anything Needed Done. He, uh, picked up from people services to operations, transportation, uh, principal, uh, mentoring, um, principals as well, Title IX, investigator. He's had a lot of hats and he's been a great, done a great job of all the positions he was at. Item two, K two, is to change positions. We do have some administrative contracts, um, as well. Um, Mrs. Baker, Sheila Hicks, Emma Vanilla, who's changing, um, custodian of five for five hours. Um, and also we have for principal, uh, Ms. Weber's there as well, Mrs. Weber's there as well, who will continue on with being a principal over at Elementary School. And we have Dr. Micah Tomlin, who is on agenda, who will take over as the new head principal of Oberlin High School, um, as well. And she's been currently transitioning with Mr. Betts. Item three is leave of absence for a few members. Item four is some new employees we have for the district. Uh, we're hiring a new couple of new cleaners, some summer help. We're hiring to provide support for our custodial and maintenance staff. And we have some monitors, um, that will be on as well for, um, for next school year as well. We're trying to fill positions as early as We're trying to fill positions as early as possible. Item five is some supplemental contracts. These, a lot of these on here are summer school. We're staffing our summer school, getting ready to go here next couple of weeks. Mr. Nenemy and Ms. Baker and our administrative team have been working hard of getting very due diligence of getting our summer program up and running with curriculum work, and we hiring our teachers and support staff to provide support. Quest approval of item A through K five.
Any comments, questions, other than the ones that were already made?
I have a question about the one teacher resigning. Is that a position that we are refilling or is that one that we don't need for next year? And one.
Hersberger.
We're filling, we'll be filling that spot. We already have it up and, and Mrs. Weber will be conducting interviews here soon. And we already contacted, went through some several applicants.
Any more questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?
Yes.
Ms. Sembek?
Yes. Okay, next we have comments, discussion, and board update. Do we have anyone with an update?
Yes.
Please go ahead.
Okay, so I have a legislative update. I was on a Zoom meeting with vouchers hurt Ohio on May fifth. They reported that there was a hearing in front of Judge Page in Franklin County Court of Common Police during the last week in April. And there were three defending groups who presented for thirty minutes each and vouchers hurt Ohio only got thirty minutes. However, the defenders used a lot of repetitive arguments and our team felt very good about the questions that were asked by the judge. Each side was asking for a summary judgment, but they didn't feel that that was going to happen anyway. They believe that it's going to go to trial and they have no idea when. Most of the meeting, the Zoom meeting that I was on was spent discussing the struggles that many districts are having, trying to get their boards to join onto the lawsuit. And let me remind you, there are six hundred school districts in Ohio and at at current three hundred of them have signed on to this lawsuit. The fact that our board voted humanely and quickly to join this lawsuit was no small thing, and I want to thank my fellow board members for having done that. If it weren't for the vouchers, Ohio would have full funding for all of our public schools. Ninety percent of all the families who take vouchers are already attending private schools and those private schools generally raise their tuition when the voucher money becomes available. It was noted that every state that has had vouchers put on the ballot before voters, it has been rejected. The next Zoom meeting is June second at seven o'clock. If any of the other board members would like to join in, you are welcome to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for that update, Janet. Anyone else?
The Endowment Board met and awarded spring grant, so all of the people who applied have gotten those emails. As a reminder, there will be another round of grants coming up in the fall, so if teachers want to go on a field trip or do something special, we encourage them to apply.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I have the JVS update from Ann Shum. The adult ed graduation will take place on June eighteenth. Their graduation was on May sixteenth, so yesterday's graduation ceremonies had, oh, they were supposed to be on May sixteenth, had to be delayed and provided the first use for real-time updates on their new sign at the corner of fifty-eight and twenty. Has anybody seen that?
Mm-hmm.
I I noticed it, which is kind of cool. They received a marketing team update. Highlights include massive increase in social media presence since they had a new person join the team in July, last July. Not only are followers and hits higher, but the but they're seeing the impact in several ways, including interest from state-level contacts and their, and JVS's work that leads to meetings, events in their facility and improvements in enrollment in the adult education program that they have not experienced before. They're planning to begin their strategic planning process over the summer using OSBA. In the remaining time, they have left with Burgess and Burgess, who helped gather constituent data for them last year. JVS has built several things into their updated five-year forecast, including the plan to have all students eat breakfast and lunch and to be student fee free. JVS is awaiting word on a thirty percent cash balance issue. They currently have about fifty-five dollars in capital, oh, fifty-five million, I think, in capital projects identified and may need to move funds into their O seven O fund. They tabled two of the Neola policy updates so board members could review the language more closely before voting since they passed policies in one step. She called two, Ann called two of the policies into question, which were the parent bill of rights and the restroom locker room policy, which she felt are a first step in allowing the state to overstep into local district decision-making. And then she said, if anyone's interested in reviewing the educational budget testimony, which we've been talking about here today, happening in Columbus, it's available on ohiochannel.org. So that's the update from JVS. And then Town and Gown has been meeting, I think we've had two meetings since our last meeting here. And Dr. Hall, if you kind of could help fill in because I missed part of both of those meetings. But I know that we talked about different collaboration efforts that we have, so Memorial Day was probably one of the topics. And then we also did discuss the passing of Officer Needham, who just, you know, had a huge impact in our community overall, and his loss was big for the city, the district, and the college as well. And I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add, because that's pretty summary.
Just like to thank the city and also the college as well with the passing of Officer Needham. That was a collaboration between all three entities together. We've worked hard from the morning. I got the phone call from chief to several meetings, that entire week of planning for that. And it was all of us, all three entities met together with our leadership and said anything we need. So we donated anything from chairs to time to bus, transportation, to anything we needed, but pretty much, that's what Town and Gown is about, everyone working together, trying to solve problems and working together. We also talked about Officer Needham, how we would memorialize him and remember him. And we all wanted to be on the same page of some things that we plan on doing for him. And that's a continuous conversation that we've been having and we'll continue with those conversations. And we definitely want to, it was a big impact to our school system and the community. We definitely want to continue that conversation with them.
And I want to continue to echo how much the Town and Gown Committee has grown and become more effective. Not that the different leadership of the city, the college, and the district weren't communicating. It just was not one that looped in the community as well, as far as having board members present to ask those questions, listen to the conversation, and be able to kind of report out and share to everyone. So we have a standing meeting scheduled via Zoom every other Friday. Before, when I first joined the board in two thousand twenty, we didn't meet in that first year. And then I kept asking about it and I think we started meeting sometime twenty twenty-one, and it was pretty periodic and random. And now today, we have regular, consistent meetings and very good open dialogue and conversation where if we need things from each other or if we need information or if we have any crisis or emergency, we can call on each other for support. And so I think that's been a great development. So just hats off to everybody who made that happen and thank you, Dr. Hall, for making sure. We always have representatives there. Thank you to the city. They always have their president and their vice president. So the mayor is on the call almost every single time, y'all. And then the college always has a representative, which when we first started having those meetings a little bit more regularly, the college is not already represented, always represented. And it's usually the president, his chief of staff, and maybe somebody else might join. So great progress there. So I just want to keep echoing that so people can know that it's coming along. So. All right.
I just add one thing. I just wanted to add, sort of on the Town and Gown theme, that watching the Oberlin College graduation yesterday and seeing so many of our students walk across that stage was really, was really fabulous.
Yeah, there was a lot of Oberlin, Ohio, under the name of the graduates. And I have to say, so my son was one of those people who crossed the stage yesterday. It was amazing. But he crossed the stage with people who went to OECD with him. I think that's phenomenal and it speaks highly of our community that you have kids that have gone to school together since they were three. So every school, all the way through to twenty-two years old. So anyway. Thank you for pointing that out, Joanne. Okay, any other reports? All right. So are there, it looks like nobody signed up still. Okay. Hearing of, so no hearing of the public on other items, future meetings. So June seventeenth, we have a regular meeting, six P M. here at Oberlin Elementary. August twenty-sixth, we have a regular meeting, six P M. here at Oberlin Elementary. We're still trying to, it's not on here, but we're still trying to plan our board retreat, which will be TBD. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. There will be no discussion. Please call the roll.
Ms. Anderson White?
Yes.
Ms. Gadsden?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
Ms. Stagel?